Meeting of the Park Commission on October nineteenth, the order. And first order of business is pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Public, which has one nation under God, equal, liberty, and justice for all.
There if you have a form, anybody has a conflict of interest, they can disclose it now. And I will make one adjustment to the agenda, I think we'll bring up under number nine pickleball and tennis players who uh sitting in the audience this evening. We'll bring that up and uh and deal with that first here. So in our last meeting, just to give you guys some history, which you probably know, maybe Jim passed along to you. There've been some people that have come to us in discussions about what can we do down at the tennis courts to accommodate the pickleball players, where we have to sign up there for the limited time for play and some issues that have come up, I guess. Last meeting or two meetings ago, we had Pat get some information for us on what other areas we're doing, and I think he just handed the package up to you. I'm just gonna hand that over to you, Pat, if you just wanna give some background to that.
Basically, what you're looking at right there is just examples of layouts. It's not something we've decided on, but it's basically you got what it looks like for a single court, you could fit two pickleball on a test court. We have new courts and they're eventually gonna be coming into a classic and on a single court, you have you got four pickles. We're we're in the playing mode, trying to think of ways to bring tennis and pickleball together. And like down in the park, we got a lot of problems with signage. You know, basically what the sign saying right now is, you know, it's mostly about tents. So one of those pages, we had a an example on my side, I mean that's to start, you know, basically explaining the rules with their ball and tents together. You know, we we asked you all to come tonight because we want to hear some feedback. You know, if you guys have some issues you wanna talk about that could help out, you know, as we plan for the board. But basically, these are all examples, this one that has four courts on one, that's just, I just threw that in there, it's just, you know, it's an example of a full tennis court. But you can actually use it as a pickle, you know, four pickle courts. I don't know in what direction the town is going in there. Like I said, these are all examples, and now it's mainly trying to get feedback from the public, you know, on your thoughts, how that's before.
On a typical Sunday morning at the court by the chamber, we've seen up to sixteen people.
Yeah.
And one time we even brought in a portable pickleball court, so we had three courts playing. And even then, we had people waiting there to to play. So I believe that we should maximize the number of courts, because the number of people that come now is very large. And I think the number is just gonna continue to grow.
It's a growing sport, so. But at the same time, we don't wanna take the test away, you know.
No, no, it doesn't, no, I would, you know, the way you have it, you know, drawn out here is on deal, first you have a tennis court, you have a fixed net for tennis. And then as far as the pickleball nets, you can have portable pickleball nets. But but I think the lines should be drawn in in advance, so that someone can come in and plot down their net on it on the existing line court.
For sure. Thanks.
Do they do those in a different color? I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's so.
Currently at the at the chamber.
Well, I'm pretty green, it equals together, it'd be like something red or orange, you know, the tennis is white and we painted the pickleball blue.
Yeah.
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 It seems to work, you know, you just you just say yourself, three lines matter.
I don't know.
And then the other thing too is, you know, talking about this, the portable nets, you know, trying to figure out like a little storage like outside that test court where
Storage here.
we could have certain people that are there all the time that have access, because they're gonna have to come on and off every time you play. And you know, like on a Sunday, you couldn't come to the town office and pick up a tennis net or, you know.
What if there were combinations?
Oh, that's what I mean, yeah.
I mean, you didn't see places that have ball dispensers, just tall things that multiple balls.
Yeah. So.
And the other thing that I've seen with a lot of courts, I don't think it's absolutely necessary, but soft sort of soft dividers. Because I you really don't run into issues with people crossing over the lines into the other court, but you always have issues with balls rolling.
Yeah.
That's a good point, of course. And so something that, when I say soft, so no one runs into it and kills themselves, it's not like a Jersey barrier, but.
Well, especially if you have two courts, I mean, two test courts, and having that divider is quite key.
And the tennis players don't have either.
Yeah.
So, cause we, right there, most of the time there are our pickleball players, they just have their certain days.
Yeah.
And chasing the balls all over the place, we wouldn't mind it, but it's usually just a you know, like a screen.
The other thing working out, trying to work it out is the scheduling. You know, I know you guys come in large groups, so when you say like an hour limit, it's kinda tough when you got twenty people wanting to play, I mean.
And then hour limits sort of doesn't, it pertains, if you if you have someone comes in at two o'clock in the afternoon
Yeah.
and someone else is waiting, they wanna come in.
Yeah.
But when we come in en masse, what happens is that one hour really doesn't apply in the sense that if someone comes, they just join us.
Yeah.
And we continually rotate and give everyone a fair chance to play, so they get in the rotation. And so the hour is sort of not pertinent to the way in which we we do it.
Yeah, I mean, the hour limit's more, you know, the tour is the main, the play tennis, you know, and we're busy, you know, like when you get the large groups, it makes it tough. So.
Yeah, cause the tennis was, it's usually only four, and we need an hour, but we'll play over, nobody comes, we get a lot of the same people comes, but we don't come en masse, we spread out over the.
And currently what we do of the whole city outdoors sports is that there's a different way of scoring, what we call rally scoring. And it which shortens the time it takes to play a single game. So when we have people who are waiting, they're not waiting long, so you play the game, the winners stay in, bring in two more people, okay, I mean, so the rotation keeps going, so that's why the hour specification.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, that makes sense.
So is this, can I just ask, is it typical etiquette that most people who play would do that, or do we run into people who, if they're not part of who's playing, want to take it more than like that? I'm just trying to figure that.
Kind of majority rules, they're welcome.
Yeah.
Okay, we welcome folks to come in, but yeah, majority rules kind of.
Okay, I was just curious if the signage, if we're talking about the signage, is that something that needs to be up because we're running into the problem of it? Or it sounds like most of you folks, kind of, there's a system that's kind of working.
Basically right now, the sign that that's up there is basically just focused on tennis.
Gotcha.
So.
I guess we could add, put a sign up.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, we may go and and careful another and make sure everybody gets a chance to play.
Not everybody's.
I'm gonna hear that's coming in, you know, if they're coming from away or whatever, you don't know.
Do it differently.
Okay. Okay, if I could say something else, and you know, I hate to bring up something controversial, particularly since I have two tennis friends that we just started. But the biggest issue that has caused, you know, arguments and conflicts between us is the concept of reserving
Yeah.
time at the court. And I think that's something that needs to be addressed.
It is, I mean, we, it's, I mean, basically, it may come down to permits or like if you've got large, really extremely large groups and you gotta be there for multiple hours. I mean, I think the tennis fans, they've had the end of the year bashes before or something.
Yes.
And you guys, I actually read a permit in person.
Yeah, we get permits at the, we, once, the one is two courts.
Yeah, where do you have the tennis court? Yeah, you have the test for like three or four hours or you celebrate your end of the year. But that's a thing we have to kinda work on, for sure.
I mean, just to give an example, on any given Sunday, to have, say, a tennis group come in and say, it's nine o'clock, we get the court now, but we don't schedule on Sunday.
I don't, I know, but is, let's say hypothetically, as you know, as though this has happened in the past as well.
That to come in and say, it's our court, you know, and try to throw us off the court. And and that's something we would like to avoid and work together to a solution to that.
It's a public court, not court, I mean, you got, you all gotta remember, it's a public court and it's nobody's court for a certain time. I mean, when you have large groups, it might come down to, you know, maybe we fill a permit for this certain other time. You know, but you it's you, we gotta try to figure out the rules where, you know, you gotta remember it's open to the public. And, you know, try to figure out a schedule, I mean, you guys are a large group coming in, so it's it's a tough, it's something we gotta figure out, you know, and.
Yeah, we've tried very hard not to schedule on their Thursdays, and so we don't schedule weekends for our tennis group. And I made a mistake on one Thursday, the first one was beginning of the season, I thought maybe it was okay. And we had the person in the bathroom, be by bathroom. So the second time was just a mistake, and and that's when all hell broke loose on one time, it was the one time. We try not to schedule on Thursdays, they can have the courts, both courts on Thursday. We have fifty people on on my list, and we never schedule two courts at one time.
Yeah, and it, I mean, if you got fifty people that are gonna show up, I mean.
But I don't schedule them all at the same time.
I don't. Yes.
Yeah, I think that's the big difference, I know, I've been in the ball more, Amy's group now for three years. It's just, the distribution, I count, we have thirty six people regularly playing.
Yeah.
But we never send more than four people to the tennis court at one time, and I see thirty or forty people from pickleball, so there's this misconception that
Yeah.
there's a lot more demand for pickleball, there's tennis. What we do is we have private courts out there we use, right?
Yeah.
And then we use one of these courts, and so there is, there's gotta be something to work out where you don't have, you know, big groups just showing up and it's crazy, we shouldn't be arguing over it. Cause ironically, there's a lot more court time than there is demand for it, right?
Yeah.
But everyone wants it at eight or nine o'clock.
Yeah.
You know, and so I think it's pretty simple, and we can probably figure this out, but.
Yeah, cause if, you know, we, I I schedule there almost every day, you know, on the court. And it's only on Thursdays that there's an issue. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, maybe once or twice, it'll be pickleball people there. You know, and also not this group that was usually, you know, visitors or whatever.
I mean, there's a lot of things we could think about, I mean, if you guys all like that Thursday spot, maybe it's like every other Thursday, you do a rotation.
Oh, we'll give it to them, we'll give them.
You know, you do a rotation there, but.
You're giving the Thursday?
Oh, yeah, we only scheduled once.
Yeah, well, it was more than once, but it was.
No, it was, the first was the second week of the schedule, oh, and there weren't that many people back.
Yeah.
There was a another issue, on the only other time, and I admit, it was my mistake, I forgot, I put a R by their name instead of someone.
Yeah.
So we don't really have, you know, the group that plays at the chamber. It it's not an organized group, you know, it's not a league or anything like that, it's just, we just happen to show up and play, but I agree. And so, you know, we say Thursday, we don't know what day it'll be next, you know, right now, one of the things, you know, one of my track hat is that Tuesdays and Fridays, we we don't schedule because a large number of the pickleball players do go on track hikes. So that's one of the reasons why it's not scheduled on those days, but that doesn't mean it couldn't be or shouldn't be.
Yeah.
But if we have more courts.
Yes, if you were to get our courts, that would solve, well, there we go.
Yeah.
What's the deal with four courts on that space?
Lines.
No, it's, there's really no.
Yeah, classic.
Oh, that's classic? Oh, okay.
So we, you have new courts coming in, they're classic, and on a single court, that that was a possible layout, you know.
That would be possible, so you might.
Right, you. See, I would, right now, the engineer is in almost the finishing stages of playing. And I talked to him today, just kinda explained to him what I was doing, you know, and I, and told him about that plan, he he thought it was great, I mean.
Honey, can I just ask, and maybe this was something that was discussed last thing, I wasn't there, the court that we have, the size of the court that we have right now
Yeah.
can fit in a range league? Can this accommodate this later, or is only a classic court to accommodate that?
This could accommodate that a range league court, a four, I mean, on one.
Okay.
But you'd have to have a divider in between the two courts to keep the balls from.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need some temporary fencing or something.
Yeah, so I mean, there's there's a lot of planning to do, we're gonna go that that direction.
Right, but if we could turn one of those courts into four, right, obviously that that goes.
Yeah.
Then they'd sort of leave a lot of pressure.
And you know, we're not talking a lot of money, really not, I mean, you you have to fix the tennis court in classic anyway, well, that's our interest for all. And then there's a crack and range league too on that other court, while they're here.
So, I think, uh, maybe just, I think they're at Great Blaster, I actually talked to him today, and I'm trying to get him up here for an estimate of the crack repair. They're supposed to be closing some courts in town, some local courts, so he's gonna contact me, he's gonna come and look at the court. And his, he can't be here till August, that's how far out he is. But I have him scheduled, if I can't find anything else, you know, but I'm gonna get an estimate on the crack repair, I mean.
Yeah, okay, how can you try Vermont tennis?
Yeah, same same thing, there's, you know, they're they're so busy right now, it's crazy.
But the lines that we have in range league, the local people did.
Yeah.
So as long as it's okay, I mean, cause the construction on the court in classic is probably local people, like M and H or somebody, I don't know.
Not that far out yet.
Yeah, of course, on the playing days.
You know, that's not tennis companies or whatever, cause you're talking the lines, right?
Yeah, the excavation, and I think you might be keeping in-house, but when it comes to the asphalt, we're doing the actual courts.
And repaying assets.
You know, the the whatever company we decide on, will come in and do that.
So so what are the courts lined for down there right now, if they're lined up?
So right now, we have two tennis courts, but only one pickleball court on each tennis court, which uses the existing tennis net.
Gotcha.
And it, and I, you know, I think these plans that really, you we can get two on a court, you know, would be even better. Or four on a double court, really would be ideal.
Okay, so your pickleball is like the poor.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Right now, right now, we have only one on a tennis court, the only real major drawback to that is the tennis net is higher than a pickleball net. Ideally, you know, if you if you had to have that situation, i- if things are cramped, that you can raise it and lower it and adjust it, might work right now, it's kind of you really can't, but you breath now, but not that I'm suggesting we do that, but that would be a way of improving what we we currently have, but this would be even better.
I mean, yeah, we talked about this last two meetings, but we wanted the input from you guys.
Yeah, thanks.
Yes.
If you're gonna put four pickleball courts on one tennis court, if you need something to divide.
Yeah, totally, talking about, yeah. And it wouldn't be that bad, I mean, expense wise.
No, I mean, the health center's got that temporary fencing that they move around.
We just needed like some storage there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's one of the things we have to look at.
Yeah, that's a good one.
And as far as the scheduling issues go, can I suggest maybe that like somebody from the tennis side and somebody from the pickleball side can get together and like, we have all winter to figure it out.
Yeah.
Right, between now and next one, next spring, figure out how you guys wanna do it, you know? And maybe just like once a month, instead of bothering Jimmy, you can come back to me and just let me know how you're doing and I'll give feedback, and then when you finally come to some sort of a plan, we'll we'll talk about it.
There's a
So the, sorry.
There's a significant number of out of town people who came this year, and and so we, I don't, I know how we'd schedule somebody from there.
That's what, that's what seems to be, putting a schedule on a public court seems a little scary. Cause if people are gonna show up and they're gonna say, I don't have a secret schedule, I won't get into it. And then this idea is not gonna, well, I was suggested to think I would want, dedicate a classic to pickleball and range league to tennis, or vice versa, or whatever. So there is a, this conflict.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying with you guys, you know, you guys, you know, talk about that, talk about whatever you wanna talk about, and you know.
We we could go without it, but like I said, we're not a league, we're not an organization, so there is, we don't have a representative, you know, that would speak for everybody.
Go ahead. Well, it's like a pick you.
And this summer, we've already taught, we've called, asking what's the pickleball schedule, what's, you know, thinking there's like two separate schedules, I mean, I had it all summer, yeah, just.
Cause the other thing, the other thing is too, is I mean, if three pickleball courts are taken, there's no tennis law, right? And even you, so you can partially only get full maximization, you know, full maximization if it's two or four pickleballs.
That's why somehow if we could figure out a four on one court, and they're divided, you know, it would kinda help the situation.
Well, that's what happens, if you get three, if you get three groups playing, the three pickleballs, they got two tennis courts.
Well, I think it's fair to say an hour use, but this particular, most recent incident that happened at at the tennis courts was with like twenty four people. And then four tennis people came in, and it was like, we're twenty four people, yes, we get an hour, but we've been waiting, you know, to get back on the courts, and it it just like was frustrating.
That's why I think.
And I know Amy is being, is receptive to the.
And that's why I think we need to coordinate, so I agree with you, it's public and it's, it doesn't sound like we should schedule.
Well, that's a key word, it's a public court.
Yeah, and I think that's key, we need to keep that in mind, but you still have to coordinate between groups, regardless of that issue. I I think that's the, interesting.
But I think it's, cause it's growing, this is growing.
Yeah.
This is, we're talking today.
Yeah.
In two years from now, we'll be talking about the same mess.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's why it almost feels like, you know, right now, dedicate, dedicate the pickleball area and tennis field, but we don't go together real well.
I don't have a.
You have one court, you can share it, sure, but now we get the luxury of two, we got to take seven, so.
Two spaces.
Yeah.
And that would make it a lot simpler, yeah.
It just, it just, I'm, I'm on the outside, but I heard about the conflicts that happened in the tennis court, it just didn't sound like range, people fighting.
No, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be that way.
No, it was stupid because it was over one day, one time, you know.
Where, yeah, I mean, well, that's, yeah, everybody has a different perspective on it.
But but let's be clear, Amy, thanks to Amy, from a tennis perspective, we have thirty six people, we don't send them all at one time. So I just wanted to make that very clear, we only sent four people, it's not that there's no interest in tennis, it's just that she hasn't coordinated.
Yeah. And we find that they aren't, the range league courts, besides Thursday during the week, there aren't pickleball, that many people playing there at all.
I think the best way to go forward with this is to find a spokesperson for each group, or two, maybe two for each group, and we all sit together at some point. You know, talk about rules, you know, how we can manage.
The other thing I would say is even if you do decide to go with a dedicated court in the classic, I would still paint the lines for both.
Absolutely.
Because you never know what the future's gonna hold.
Yeah, cause you would get the, if the court's empty, in tennis, somebody wants to play tennis, like tennis.
Right.
Right, you know, even if it's supposed to be the dedicated to pickleball, and I think you just have to kind of work with, if somebody pickleball shows up, but I think you're absolutely right, maximize the use of the courts.
Yeah, and you know, on, in the future too, is, wouldn't it be great if it was an indoor court?
Okay, you're in charge.
Like especially if a classic is so self-contained, if somehow, you know, well, you don't know, maybe it would pass.
We need a curling.
No balls, we're gonna.
Maybe ten years down the road, we're gonna talk about it.
Yeah.
That might work.
We call.
Yeah.
Some people are sharp.
I'll be right back.
That's right, you're right.
All right, I'm just, just wanna bring everybody back just for a second, so is there, is there any more feedback that anybody has regarding tennis and pickleball?
Can I make a suggestion?
Already had.
In Portland during Oaks, maybe that spokesperson can contact them, they've got tennis courts, they've got pickleball. And they seem to get it to work, so maybe they need to talk to the rec people there or other towns.
And you guys rest.
That's one other way of, like, for for media research and get ideas, you know, getting your input right now, but it's still, you know, there's a lot to do, so.
I mean, they, the pickle people are outside the fence waiting until someone loses, and then they go in, two go in, you know, and it's, it seems to work.
And they leave. They leave you the nest right out, they just have on the side, so people either you play tennis, you play pickleball, you roll a man.
Yeah, if you, maybe just get a cover for the nets, large proof cover, and leave the nets right at the courts.
There's a, there's a.
But I agree with you, Pat, I don't want to solve it here, I think I probably should pick representative for.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I agree with you.
But right now, I'm just getting feedback, you know, seeing what you guys are telling me, you know, using that to help me figure this out, so.
I'm not clear about.
Thanks for inviting us.
Thank you guys for coming, it's your pleasure.
I'm not clear about that. You're not saying.
It's a public court.
No, I get that, but I think it's, they, they schedule, you face it, you know, we'll all immediately tell somebody to sign, it's a simple year forever, you're not saying that we're not gonna schedule, like, maybe.
In the past one, five years, this is.
I'm not, no, I'm not saying to not cooperate and come up with a plan, but what I'm saying is, I don't, I don't care if it's pickleball or tennis, I just think that we should have a dedicated time for the people that have been doing this all this time to be able to play, and that we, like, I'm just trying to clarify, you, you're not saying that when the schedule comes out and I says nine o'clock on Tuesday, and I get there and, you know, we've been doing this for decades, and then there's other people there which are just having fun, right, is that what you're saying?
No, no, this is exactly, you're, 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 you're explaining the problem that we face.
I mean, I think, I, which, you know, I'm not saying every day or every hour, I'm just saying, can't we just at least a lot of particular time for pickleball and tennis to just definitely have that, it doesn't even, it cannot even be one day, I just want to definitely.
Being a public court, though, it's kinda hard to like, you know, you, if I do it for this group, I gotta do it for every group, you know, and it just, then it becomes a bigger problem.
One group, you're talking about. Well, there could be more groups, so just becau, I think what he's saying is that just because this group has been going on for however long it's been going on, we have more people coming, more groups. If they know that, okay, well, we can form a set group, but what other groups besides pickleball and tennis group, what? No, but different sets of them, like you guys have your own around summer.
Could be a summer group.
Different tennis people come to town, different pickleball people come to town, they may not.
I don't mind, you can squeeze them into the schedule too, I'm just saying, I think we should be allowed to go there when we say we're gonna go there, cause it's hard enough for everyone to schedule time, we wanna know, we show up there.
This is stuff we're gonna work out in the future, we will, that's why I'm saying like, you know, a spokesperson for each group.
Can we agree on a spokesperson, but we can talk about this.
Amy's ours.
Well, I know, I'm just, I live here, I think you could both do it, I mean, I just think two, at least two for, for, I mean, yeah, cause, yeah, it's not fair, I'm like that all the time, we're bodying them.
Yeah. I can participate, yeah.
Yeah, I would find, I'm the only one who plays every other day at home sports, probably in this room, I switch back before, and so I didn't mind having a say.
Yeah, and we could just, I mean, I'm going for the one, but we can zoom, have zoom meetings and and we'll figure out that.
And also, if there's somebody that we can just get an email address or something from, and you can reach out to them when we're ready to have some more conversation.
Yeah, I would volunteer to record that, to pickleball as well unless someone else wants. Marriage, marriage. I just said two, very sad, too.
Yeah, but she does both. I do, I do both, but you know, I'm just.
So that's like three men is the work.
So that's like three men is the work.
Yeah, they totally say.
Do not put a title on it.
That has to be long.
Yeah. She can come on too.
Uh, also, if you do put up a sign, I think you should, uh, have. I suppose, you know, if you set up a new sign that says kind of some pickleball.
Then this is just an idea.
I know, but if you do, you should put something for Jeff Ryan, I think you should. Jeff Ryan?
Oh, I just said.
Hopefully, I see you February, I mean, Christmas.
You can, so, yeah, it's best job.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you're right, you're right. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
They might, they might. But they have. They're pretty for me, I'll always send you. Yeah. So, yeah. Um, can I, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I can't, yeah.
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah.
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 But yeah, it's, I mean, I hope a lot of the year. I think you should really go like, I, my last day. So, I just say what's there. I, I think it's, that's. I mean, I just wanna make sure. I don't know. My, yeah. I mean, I like, I'm like, so. I'm, I think, I think I feel like, no, I'm not. But yes, I said, I said, I've, I've. I'm, I'm. So, yeah. So, so. That's why I, yeah.
Yeah. They have some question. Maybe Amy. Some information. Yeah. Yeah.
Maybe those.
Send you all that, try to. Yeah. Exactly. Send you all that, straight there for now. That, we're the two of us, tennis.
He's saying.
I know, yeah.
Of course. When we travel and everyone. Are we starting to chase?
Most of them.
Yeah. Are we, are we supposed to be sign blank all the time?
So, are we signing the parks like with those things?
Uh, I can't. Where they start on.
They're quite good. It's around.
I was telling.
Kelly. Okay, all good.
It's not been a good week. It's, it's just a business. Okay. Thank you.
Hey, have a good night, thanks for coming.
Thanks, guys.
Alright. Anyone?
Yes, let us just. We're always at a turn, isn't it?
Make a motion, could you?
So, back up to public dispute, but nobody's here, so. Uh, alright, review the minutes from our September twenty-eighth meeting. Entertain any motions to accept those.
Make a motion to accept the, uh, minutes as ready.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all approved, all in favor, so we can. We have any correspondence to pass? Nothing there, alright, park use permits, I have one for the giving tree here. The lighting of the giving tree.
Crazy.
Does that say this, thirty-sixth? Does it have the original pieces? So, November twenty-fifth, excuse me, forty-sixth o'clock. And, um.
Oh, sure, we're back to where we actually are, here we go, here we go, okay, no, no.
Yes, sorry, 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 down to number eight there. Uh, so yeah, everything just like they've done in the past, there's been no issues with any other departments in the, in the town office, I'm assuming, police, fire, or anything, so. It's a big event, everybody's.
What's the.
Definitely, no.
We, the lights are up too, we took the old ones down, the lights are up, we're just fixing the star.
The, the new lights up?
Yep.
I thought all figured out lately, yes.
The, the tree's still there, right? Cause we had talked during this.
No, it's.
I actually, I called, uh.
Yes, what happened to that?
There's, there's a company out of, uh, Kingfield that I'm looking to get a, um. For a replacement next year.
McClures?
McClures.
McClures, Adam, he's a good guy. Um, because back when we were discussing the war monument, um. There was talk about replacing the tree back there, cause that one's kinda.
Yes.
So, yeah, I, I just hadn't, hadn't thought about it till I just saw.
There's some gaps, I mean, you know, and if you get under the tree, you can really see.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but, okay, good, so that's, that's still going. So, uh, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve the giving tree lighting permit.
Motion. Accept the permit.
Feel so.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? So, alright, new business, signage in town, signage in town park.
Yeah, the, the biggest thing was just the pickleball, tennis, but, uh, you know, since we were talking about that, so, you know, there is. Things that can be updated, um. You know, that boat dock area to handicap park and, I mean. There's a few spots where it's really the tricky signage.
And that's another thing we've talked about over the years, it's kinda making everything look a little more uniform.
Yeah.
Town, that's just townwide, not necessarily the park, just instead of five different kinds of signs.
And, and another thing too, is that you go down to the bow ramp area, you know, the, where the trailer park is, that eye drop should be paved. I mean, if you go down there and you see the trailers parked, you know. Sometimes they park in car spots and then they're in the eye, it just. I don't know, the eye drop seems to be more of a problem.
Cause that's all clear, there's nothing in there now, right?
No, it used to be a flower.
Yeah, right, so, I agree, I think it should be too, I mean, even when it, when it wasn't.
You could probably came a few spots by doing it, maybe. The trailer parking was, you know.
Um, so to, just talking about that signage in the park, and I know we, a while back, we discussed what we wanted as far as over in, um.
Chamber Park.
Just no, um, kind of reiterating what park. Protocols or rules we wanted, uh, back up, because when they did the improvement, that sign that was there came down, um, and. We had discussed a couple times, like what the, did we feel was important to be on that sign as far as the park.
So, when you come up to the, the bow ramp area, you got that big green sign that states, you know, by the time when the arc closes, there's. There is nothing over by the bathrooms, they can't, they're used to.
Yeah, because there's used to be one, and I think it came down when they did the whole, and then when Keith was here, he had brought up.
They used to. Yeah.
I would like to go over, you know, new signage and what do we feel is the most important stuff that we wanted to.
Cause it needs to be something.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah.
So. At some point, I guess that's. Something that should be done, whether it's what we decide or if it just replicates as a duplicate of whatever's on the other side, I don't know if it. Is the same, if it's. Placable, if it's all the same, it's more dock.
It's, I believe it's mentioned, I believe the dock is mentioned in that one.
Boat stuff on that sign. Okay.
There's no beach, well, it's, it needs to be updated too, cause I think it's, it is something that says no beach of, of boats or. You know, I think it was before the dock system was put in.
Alright.
Can't be too bold, or so, so after hours. I gotta look at it. Figure it out, but. There, I mean, new signage, updated signs, there, there is definitely some.
Good, once that's on the radar, so that's good. Um, and which brings us into the launch dock lighting, gave us some information on that.
Couple examples, I mean. Trying to see what the Black Sky Initiative.
Did this coming from last week, was this discussed last week?
Yeah, yeah. Um, the, with our easy go in the box system, the, you got some lights here that actually stick into them, but the. It's like a plug in, right, right into the dock.
Okay.
It's solar light, and basically it brings the light down on water or across the, uh. Actually, walkway.
I like that.
Yeah, that'd be, I don't know, that's kinda cool.
The one that sits down.
Brings.
And where you got these slits, like the boat puts into, and actually, I mean, in the picture, it shows it lights up the water area where it's, what we're holding. The other thing too is having maybe two of those, uh, pole lights on the very end of the dock where it, when you're coming in, you can actually see.
See that, right, yeah.
And again, and this is just, I mean, doing research, I mean, if you had other ideas, we.
That's a great idea, I, I was wondering what those little holes were for on the dock. But, and you don't even have that, that many, you know, you don't have to have.
So, though, they're mainly to connect, they're used to connect links.
Oh, they are, that's kinda great.
Uh, but you can also, and they have these lights that fill in those spots.
Oh, I see, gotcha, 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 gotcha. Yeah, so, you know. A few of those, a couple of pole lights.
I mean, we probably wouldn't go like you see in the picture, we'd probably go like five in a row, they'd be more spread out.
Yeah. Yeah, and a couple, like you, like you said, a couple of pole in the end.
It's a boundary to the dock for a night.
Yeah, 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 cool.
Any idea what those cost or?
Um, I think I was looking those, uh, two pack for like fifty-four or something. Yeah, yeah, I know, look into it, you know, look at their, you know, comments, you know, uh, how, how are they, are they, you know, highly recommended? Stuff like that, so.
They last a year or five years or?
Yeah.
But.
But they're solar lights, I mean, they're generated by the, generated by the sun, so.
So they're all solar?
Yeah. And it'd be hard to, you know, and have them solar out there.
Yeah, that, that was a silly question.
Those will be, yeah.
Alright.
I mean, I think that looks the best, I mean, if that, that looks really nice, so if that's something that you would. Look at, price wise, and like how much, how many realistically would we need?
We're coming in a bunch of season two, so it's something to play for, yeah.
Is that something you want us to make a vote on, or you just go?
Um. I guess we can vote on it, and right now, I was mainly talking about it, you know, it's something that we keep talking about, cause I wanted to keep on researching, seeing, you know, getting an idea. If there's anything better, but I, that's the best I've seen yet.
The docks are in the water?
Yes, as of today.
Was just curious. Get an idea how many of my need, but.
Yeah, they came out today, actually. So.
I mean, I like, I like that, and I trust that if that's the best that you've seen, they do like that they just fit in there and you don't have to worry about. You know, anything else.
The one thing I wanna look at is the duration of the life.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, how long do they last?
So maybe if you can check into that, maybe next meeting, it's just, we can just kinda make a final decision, that's the route we should go, and then maybe good. Budget for that. That's our.
Yeah, figure out quantity, we'll look at that, yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, I have some for my dock and technology's come a long way, mine have lasted like four years, they're like, you know, fifteen, twenty bucks a piece or something, and. So, I bet you they do well.
You put lights in there and whatever goes in? Bring those inside or you didn't make the dock?
No, I ta- I take them out.
Yeah.
Just took them off today too.
Um, alright, Dan, so continuing business, Lake and Library Louvre.
Um, I don't really have anything except, uh. Uh, Larry from the, the state, he's working on the kiosk still, you know. The design, I didn't, uh, print anything, but this is a rough draft he has, the color of the, it's, the color picture of the fish is, uh. Just as an example, that's what it looked like eventually, but that's what the book, and the fish swimming. And then next to it, there'll be a map, and then on top, it'll say like, come up here, Lou. And he's, he's working on the kiosk like the one that's up at.
Yeah, that color is awesome.
With Willa. So, yeah, I don't know who's doing the sketching, but it's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Nice, and then, then on the books, he wrote names of local. Authors, stuff, titles, Stephen King book, you know, that's it. So he's still plugging away.
Small study.
So, steady, baby.
Coming out of the end. Uh, dog park in town, do we have any other information or?
It's still ongoing, I'm still waiting to hear from the director from Brunswick, he hasn't got back to me, um. I've left him two emails, but he talked to me a while back, said he was gonna come to that, so he's busy and. I haven't extended my research yet, I was hoping to hear from him and then take, take it from there, but. Still a little.
Alright. Moving somewhere, that's good. Playground install day.
I drove down there today.
So, we got our parts in, um, yes, uh, two days ago. And then Earl was down doing the excavation, and we moved the, uh, the spinner and the, uh, the, to the other side of this, so it's that. And got everything estimated, I mean, everything kinda leveled out and ready for installation, once we get our, the, uh, company's, uh, crew. Up to install.
Oh, okay.
So, can I ask a question? The. Like the barrier that's around it right now, is that just, what is, was that just the generalized outline of like?
Yep, that includes the safety zone and everything.
Okay, that's basically the safety, so that's how.
The outer edges are.
Okay.
Basically, yeah, edges above the safety.
So that you can see that, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was like, that's not, that's not too bad, it does go, I encourage you to like take a ride down, just so you can see, it does go a little down into. Closer to the beach than I think I was expecting that it would, but I think it will be fine, honestly. Um, and that's all going to be. That was the words, uh, the wood chips or something?
Yes.
Right there, until that, to that line, right?
Yeah.
Whatever it is that we decided to put there, or whatever's being put down, okay. I mean, I think it, it looks good. And it's all in there.
Is wood chips preferred?
Yes, substantially, yeah, we could have gone on that rubberized top.
I was, yeah, I was gonna ask about that too.
Then maintenance wise, then you got your piece, and then. Uh. There's nothing on there, I'll tell you, you know, being where I was at for the last six years, cleaning the arc, doing this machine. They, they never touched the wood chips.
Really?
Really, I just, it's gotta be that on the level, that, I mean, just that feeling.
Well, it'll be less cleanup then, because it's down into the, uh, towards the beach more, so it'll be less of that, which is.
But I mean, yeah, I, I've never had an issue with, uh, this pool.
Hmm.
Thank you, whatever.
Well, it's all, it's all around it, with the grasses, I mean, it's just, when you get on there, it's, I don't know, like the field, but they don't, I guess.
See, we do a favor by expanding the playground.
There you go.
We solved a problem.
I can't believe we're talking about installation.
I know, it's awesome, it's so cool.
I'm still trying to, I.
It's been a long time, I'm very excited.
D V, I'm waiting for reply, he, he got back to me and said that he was gonna connect about the additional sand on the beach. Trying to get regulations, rules.
Okay.
Um. Trying to, he's gonna connect me to another person. And he's supposed to contact me. He, there, they wanna know exactly what the plan was, you know, I need to go in a plan where, towards the water, but. I, biggest thing is getting the regulations and the rules, what do we have to do, you know, permanent wise. Like, hoping to get more sand on the beach.
That would be fabulous.
Now, those, those swims staying there, or those?
Yes.
Those are staying there?
Yeah.
Or just like, I never saw them, so, and the beach back.
The biggest thing is getting sand down there, but if we're able to bring that five feet or, you know, just that lip right there, and if you down there, it doesn't. A lip there, if you just kind of smooth it out.
If you can, yeah, if, uh, just like create it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, D P regulations, we.
Yeah, I have to be careful.
When you're that close to the water, it's just, you don't hear the rules.
And we're still number one on the docket for the dock this winter, correct?
First. That's what, that's what's been said, so, you know, I'll be here for you now, so that's, that'd be good.
Um, alright, comp plan directives. Anybody have a, do you look at it, have any issues, or questions, or suggestions?
I have a really, okay, no, that's fine, just curious. I actually talked to Steve Hewens today.
Oh, yeah?
We sat down for like an hour.
Thanks.
You know, talked everything about rec, the future, and you know, ten years in a row, and because he his. I guess he was put on a job for the recreational side of things on the front, so we had a nice discussion today. You know, everything from where the park's going and infrastructure. More of the recreational side of things in the park, but I mean, the rec, you know, relates to the park in a way, so.
Yeah.
But the biggest thing I brought up is having that, you know, rec center or infrastructure, you know. Instead, because right now, I told them, you know, the majority of the events we have are pop ups, you know, because we don't have that. If you go down to Farmington, they have a, they have a rec center, they have a gym, they have rock climbing wall outside, they have all these rooms where you can have bingo for the Ellen lady, they can have all this, you know.
It'd be nice.
It's a set spot rather than, where can we go?
Yeah, and then. Because we have a lot of events during the summer, but when it comes to winter, I mean, our hands are tied, I mean, it's not a whole lot of pit, because. We barbed the gym at the school for, you know.
And even then, you're limited unfortunately to weekends, because you have one gym.
Yeah.
And you have three or four teams practicing in there, and so you're looking at having availability at eight o'clock at night, what are you gonna do at eight o'clock at night?
Transportation, you know, I I mentioned that to Steve, you know, if we had some kind of a transport van or something that, you know, you you bring the other, like some. A group of people shopping for the weekend, they can't get out of town, you know, these are like some of the programs you could do, if you had, you know, the option to be able to do it.
The the basketball rec, that's just on weekends too, that's just, is that a Sunday or?
Yeah, well, you know, the gyms are Sundays, ladies are like three to five, and then we're doing events five to seven.
On Sunday?
Yeah.
Because, you know, actually, a pickleball person brought up, would that be an option to play once in a while there in the winter time or something?
I think they would look at what could potentially be the damage to the floor, only because they refinish it, it because one, it's a classroom.
Yeah. And then you got a line.
And then it's, yeah.
Line for.
Oh, you have to line it.
Yeah, so that's the only, I think, that would be the hardest part, just knowing how it works.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Except the lines, if the lines go down, they probably need down, you know, you wouldn't get it off, you know.
Yeah, it would be like tape if you were the lines, yeah, could make it hard during the season, I would say.
Right, right.
Yeah. That's one of those things that we have rec center.
There's volleyball lines up there, aren't there? At the high school?
I don't know that they actually have them on the court.
I think, I think they are, because we played there with that.
I know, yeah, we had.
Crappy net.
Yes. But I don't know if they, if the lines are actually moving forward, they might be.
I think, I think they're there.
Yeah, the the white ones, I think.
White ones, right, 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 but I digress.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry.
That's all right, so um all right, if you guys did have a chance to look through those directives and have any inputs, the comp plan is uh the committee is. Running full, you got a good group?
Who's Steve Hewens?
He's on the park.
He's he's part of the the uh the committee.
Is he like a local, I know it's Steve Hewens, but it's not, he's a big guy, a big guy, just.
It's about your size, I mean. But he's one, he's, his primary objective is worrying about parks recreation. Trying to get the information all he can, the committee.
We got a project to handle up there, right?
Let's see, by the time the comp when you guys.
Um anybody have anything else?
I'm sorry.
All right, well, next meeting's November sixteenth, five P M, all in motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Motion second, all in favor? So moved five fifty five, I guess with everyone full of people, we shouldn't do it too fast.
Oh, really? That was good.
It was, I mean, that they're the ones that, you know.
Yeah, yeah.